Madam Chair, it's nine o'clock. Would you like me to get started reading the preamble?
Yes, let's go ahead. Let's go ahead.
Michael, you're a little bit faint. I don't know if anybody else can hear you better, but you might want to turn up your microphone a little bit.
Thank you, Maurice. Clients with notification requirements of Ohio's open meeting law in section 101.021, modified ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976. Notice of this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the purview of the City Planning Department conducts its meetings according to Robert's Rules of Order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Abstentions from any vote due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. Order to ensure that everyone participating in the meeting has the opportunity to be heard, we ask that you use the raise hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. Raise hand feature can be found in the participants panel on the desktop and mobile version, activated by clicking the hand icon. Just wait for the chair or facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When finished speaking, please lower your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon again to your microphone. We'll also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated, chat button located on the bottom of the WebEx screen. All in users can unmute by using star six. All meeting activity is being recorded via the WebEx platform. These proceedings are also being livestreamed via YouTube. All requests to speak on a particular matter via our website and email have been considered. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comment on a particular matter. I'm ready to call the roll when, when ready, Madam Chair.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Downing.
Present.
Lueker.
I saw August, so I don't know if he is on mute. August?
We can't hear you, August.
I'm working on it, thank you.
There you go.
We got it, we got you.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Present.
Paul.
Present.
Life.
Present.
Chair, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Before we jump into the agenda, I wanted to start the meeting, obviously, since there's been a lot of change. By first thanking Mayor Bibb for the opportunity to serve the City of Cleveland and his administration as the new Chair of the Planning Commission. I'm really honored and humbled and plan to serve to the best of my ability. I also want to thank August Lueker for taking on the role of Vice Chair of the Commission. I look forward to working hand in hand with August and with our incredible Council Representative Charles Slyth, who's just been such an amazing Commission Member and Councilman on this committee, and also all the committed members of this Commission who give so much of their time. I want to acknowledge and thank our outgoing Chair, David Bowen, for his long service to the Commission. And especially before we begin, I want to acknowledge the great work of our outgoing Planning Director Freddie Collier. No one that I know cares more about this city than Freddie does, and I personally, but I know we all appreciate the hard work and tireless energy he gave to the Planning Department and to the community as a member of this community. I wish him the best in his next endeavor, and I have no doubt that he will continue to make a significant impact on our community. He's been at this department since I was at the Planning Department so many years ago. I also want to thank all of the City Planning staff, both who's here today and who isn't, for their deep expertise. This Planning Department, I know from being a staff member long ago, works as a team, is committed to their work. And I know the past week has been a lot of transition, so I just want to thank you all and those that I've worked with for their professionalism this past week, and I hope that you'll all lean into the great opportunities that are emerging from this new administration. It's exciting, and so I really want to thank the staff and know that this Commission appreciates all that you do year in and day in and day out and through the years. So, before we start, I just want to ask any other Commission Members if they would like to say anything at this kind of moment of transition before we jump into the agenda.
Lilly, and you covered it really well, but I'll just echo the congratulations for you and August. I look forward to working with both of you, the Commission being led under your combined leadership, and I think we have an exciting slate of projects coming forward, and I'm just excited for a new year.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now, August.
Finally, I figured it out. Thank you. I apologize for the interruption.
Okay. Did you have something you wanted to say, or you just want to make sure we could hear you?
I wanted to make sure you could hear me. I mean, you guys have summed it up. I don't believe in repeating what's been said. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, August. Okay, so we have a very important first item on our agenda, and I just wanted to say something about it. We are going to nominate the interim Planning Director as the search goes on for the new Planning Director of the Department. And I'd start by just explaining, because it's unusual, the Planning Department and the appointment of the Planning Director is very different than any other department in the city. By charter, this Commission actually nominates the Planning Director, and so I'm just going to read the sentence for this Commission out of the Charter. It says, "There shall be a Planning Director who shall be nominated by the Commission and appointed by the Mayor at his discretion or her discretion." And that means that it's a two-step process. So, we will nominate the interim Planning Director today so that business can continue in the department until the permanent Director is put in place, and we will do this again, and we will have a two-step process for that when it happens. So, today, we are going to nominate Marka Fields as the interim Planning Director, and we'll need a motion to do so, and I think she might be here. So, I would like to congratulate her as the interim Planning Director and look forward to working closely with her if she's here. Don't know if she wants to say hi, and then we'll ask for the Commission for a motion to nominate her as the interim Planning Director. Marka, are you here?
I am here.
Okay. So, thank you for your service, and this Commission looks forward to working with you during this period.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move to nominate Marka Fields as interim Planning Director for the City of Cleveland.
I'll second the nomination. Downing.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I've worked with Marka for a number of years while I was working for the city, mostly in the context of the City Land Bank. But just, Marka is a wonderful set of knowledge within the Planning Department. She's, you know, been with the city for a long time, has all the skill sets, and I'm happy to see her step into this role.
Great. So, a motion and a second. Can we take the roll, please?
Downing.
Yes.
Lueker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Beth.
Paul.
Yes.
Slyth.
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Marka, and we're excited for you. We're excited for the department, and please call on us as you need us. We will support you in any way you need and really excited to work with you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and the first administrative matter is ordinance 1147-21. This is authorizing the Director of Capital Projects to issue a permit to CCA CBD Cleveland, which is for 328 Jefferson Street, to encroach on the public right-of-way on Euclid Avenue by installing 12 micro piles as necessary. So, I hope somebody can explain this one to us, and I assume this is someone here from the city to herself.
Actually, Madam Chair, this is an administrative approval. Director Collier had already signed it. It was just left off of the last agenda as an administrative approval, so I had to put it on this one.
Okay, that's fine. And so, I think that is the only administrative matter, correct?
That is correct.
Any others? Okay, so these are all the administrative approvals. We'll need a motion.
I'll move approval. Downing.
Second, Lueker.
Okay, motion and a second. Can we take the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Lueker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott. Dr. McCray Scott.
I see her.
I think she's muted. Down is abstaining.
Okay.
Yes.
Slyth.
Yes.
McCray Scott, yes. Okay, thank you. Can you add that, Michael? The next item is townhouse development. This is permanent parcel number 002-27-033 at 5908 Lawn Avenue. I show that Shannon is here to introduce this as well as the project applicants.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Shannon Leonard, City Planning. So, this is a unique parcel south of Madison, north of the RTA station. It sits at the corner kind of Beverly Court and Lawn Avenue. They're both dead-end streets here, north of the RTA station. This is in a two-family district. Next slide, please. And so, as you know, with the zoning code and the townhouse code in 337.031, Planning Commission has the ability to determine whether or not a townhouse use, which is single-family units attached, have the, meet the character of the neighborhood by being placed on certain parcels within two-family districts. And there's certain conditions that you must determine if it meets those conditions. Next slide, please. And so, basically, is this development visually compatible with nearby properties and scale, height setbacks, orientation, roof lines, materials, colors, and proportions of architectural features. And so, this project is still going through the design review stages. It's really just for two townhomes on this lot. It's to replace an existing deteriorated single-family, two-family home with a garage in between two parcels at the end of the street. Nearby context is there are townhomes in the area. It's an interesting street. There's not a whole lot going on here, north of the trail. South of the property is some woods before the RTA station. And so, there's a few pictures here from the architect. The architect and the developer really wanted to make sure that this use was approved before they continued doing any more designing and finishing the design review process as it's expensive. Next slide, please. The other is the development site layout arranged so as to create visual interest, promote security, safety, promote safe and efficient pedestrian vehicle circulation, as well as to conserve natural features and provide usable common and private open space. And so, on the left side of your screen, you can see what's existing. It's an existing duplex, up-and-down units with an existing garage that is deteriorating or is deteriorated. And then the new proposed use here is these townhomes, two townhomes on the lot will be subdivided on this parcel. So, again, they're two single-family townhomes in a two-family district. Next slide, please. And so, the developer and the architect, I believe, are here, as well as Adam Davenport, to offer a little bit more context and talk about the area in more detail.
Great, thank you very much, and thank you, everyone, for your time. My name's Adam Hirsch. Yusein Ganem is also with me. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, and thank you for that introduction, Shannon. It was very thorough. Appreciate your time. Next slide, please. A lot of these items Shannon already commented on, but we'll be reviewing the site and existing conditions in a little bit more detail, surrounding context. You saw a brief approach to our parking as well as the design. The Yucca Village is southwest of downtown Cleveland, and you can see in the right image here where 5908 Lawn Avenue is. It's right adjacent to the West 65th RTA Station, and actually, the property directly north of us, Yusein Ganem is a resident of the neighborhood and owner of both properties. Next slide, please. You can see, this is a little bit of a rundown area. There's, the existing structures on the site are in poor condition. The neighboring site is in poor condition, and these are directly adjacent to the RTA Station. They have great visibility. There's some nuances in the area. In fact, some of the neighbors have complained about people breaking into the properties and, you know, other misdoings. So, we see a great opportunity here to make a real improvement to the neighborhood. Next slide, please. Once again, this is just an overall map showing the location of our site relative to the RTA Station. Next slide.
It's going to be for Cindy, so I'm good.
Can someone unmute themselves, please? Who's talking? Thank you.
And, thank you, thank you very much. And you can see in this site, relative to where our site is, it is really more of a private access drive relative to the rest of the neighborhood, because whenever the railway came through years ago, Lawn Avenue was essentially cut off, and then this site becomes more of a private drive. Next slide, please. Also, relative to the walkability of the neighborhood, the RTA Station, those who are using it for public transportation, they walk through the gardens, and then they use these primary streets to head in opposite directions. Essentially, this site is not really connected to the full neighborhood as a whole on pedestrian scale. Next slide, please. And then likewise, you saw some images of the existing site, the neighboring site. The two sites just adjacent to that are also vacant land bank sites as well. So, we see potential opportunities in the future that those will also be developed, but we'd like to get them all rolling for the site and how it's developed. Next slide, please. And then on top of that, something that the Yucca Village is striving for relative to the RTA Station is to create density in the area. In 1998, there was a fight to keep the RTA Station in this location open, and then they've really developed this narrative to hold on to that opportunity to build density in the area and make things more accessible within the neighborhood. You can see within this diagram here, there are some adjacent townhomes just off the street. The pink slides, or the pink blocks, represent other duplexes and multifamily in the area. And then the current master plan even mentions just south of our site where's the proposed master plan development, to create greater density, such as townhomes within those properties as well. So, we can certainly see our property playing a role. Next slide, please. As Shannon mentioned, these are some adjacent properties in regards to form, materiality. The bottom-left image is an image directly from the neighborhood master plan. You can see where our property exists and across the street, the intention to develop more dense living within the area. Next slide, please. And then, as Shannon mentioned, there is an existing garage directly on the street. We're doing our due diligence. As we know, that is inappropriate to typically have garages directly on the street, and this is a very tight site we're working with. It is a two-family site. Currently, the existing housing has existing up-and-down units with an existing garage at the street level. We're proposing to have essentially a duplex, but we understand that that's identified as a townhome by having them side by side and allowing the garage to be recessed within the structure itself. Next slide, please. These are a few conceptual diagrams showing the form of how we plan to achieve this and make it appropriate for this neighborhood. Starting with the top-left going right, we have the existing site with the setbacks, extruding mass to allow for enough program that would be appropriate for livability within this area. We intend to reduce the lower structure to create a porch form, so it relates to the existing buildings in the neighborhood. Conceal the parking within the forum, bring it down to a neighborhood scale, and then, since we are essentially taking up a majority of the same within this neighborhood, within this site, place it on the rooftop and allowing for amenity for the residents. The second diagram below shows where our property is located. It shows the adjacent properties and their relative height. And as you'll see in later concept diagrams, that we even read, although our full building height is at the 35-foot by rate, we're using architectural needs to bring that down to fit within the context of the neighborhood. Next slide, please. These are some concept floor plans we're working on. You can see on the first floor on the left, we have the garage recess with a parking area in the front and a bonus room in the back. The next level up is essentially the main living area. Up above that is the private quarters and then a roof deck on the uppermost level. Next slide, please. And then, as our final slide, this is a very early and conceptual idea of how this building could take form, allow it to fit within the context of the neighborhood, reduce visibility of parking, reduce visibility of the garage, and then create a more attractive appearance relative to the RTA Station, and something that would hopefully inspire further development and opportunities within this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Commission Members, any questions or comments?
Yeah, Madam Chair, to the applicant, what's the, what's the cart path? What's the right-of-way on that street? From back of sidewalk to back of sidewalk?
Currently, we are aligning it with the, with all the adjacents, the adjacent frontages of the existing buildings. It is essentially right at the street edge. There is no.
No, that's not what I'm asking. How wide is the street? Is it a typical city right-of-way?
It is probably about 15 to 16 feet in width.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to be clear. So, it's not a typical city width, just sort of an aberration, as it were.
That's correct. There's actually more of a, I like to call it cul-de-sac, right in front of our property. This diagram represents it a little bit. Thank you. Yes, you can see within that planning, it's where our property is, a cul-de-sac, and then Beverly Court, which is more or less where our property is, does have a slightly reduced street width. Correct.
Right. I think the way you dealt with tucking the parking under actually makes it a lot easier to negotiate ingress and egress. I think it was a very creative solution. So, I believe that's, that addresses the width of the street.
Thank you.
I have a question. It might not be for you, but I'm just curious. I like the plan that showed the, sort of the additional kind of district development and actually, you know, leveraging that station and the Yucca District development. Are some of those projects actually moving forward, let's say, as part of the master plan? Because I think one thing that will help here is Lawn Avenue, and if you could, if those can be realized, it could be kind of a charming court that, you know, is proximate to the station and leaves this project less isolated there. And so, I'm just curious if you know where those additional developments are.
To my understanding, I'm not aware of where additional developments are, but I do know that the Detroit Shoreway has been securing land within that area to eventually complete this vision of the master plan. So, there are intentions to move forward. I don't know the status of current projects that may be on those sites at the moment.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
I might be a little bit, if that's okay.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Yusein. I'm the person who lives behind this current property, and also, I guess I'm considered the developer. So, we've been in chats with Detroit Shoreway to the two side-by-side properties that are available, because we wanted to maybe try to even fit within the neighborhood better using all four lots. But they don't want to use townhomes on their, on their lots. So, we are in talks with them of potentially developing affordable housing on those lots in the future if this project were to go well, and once we establish a relationship with them. So, we've kind of been talking to them with that, but at the current time, nothing has been started.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have Adam.
Adam?
Thanks, Madam Chair. The, a couple other just notable developments. So, Detroit Shoreway owns both those kind of rectangles that are the proposed master plan developments. The lots that you see in reference are also in our City's land bank as well. And then the Oco Townhouse project is being built currently. So, and with reference to the other completed projects, this is going to be hopefully a pretty dense area in the future because of the Rapid Station. Walking, walking to it from Beverly Court is probably a three-minute walk across that little pedestrian bridge. So, this is the perfect area, in our opinion, to do some, some smart intensity.
Madam Chair, I would like, like to commend the, sort of the format here. Shannon came in to sort of explain things in sort of layman's terms, so we can better understand. That was very helpful for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Shannon's good. All right, Commission Members, any other questions? Or we have a motion?
I'd like to move approval. Downing. It's a very interesting project.
I second McCray Scott.
No, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, Michael, can you take the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Lueker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Beth.
Paul.
Yes.
Slyth.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. I really wish you good luck on this project.
Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
We'll see you again with the next project.
That's right. Take care. Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to design review. Diane is going to take over for this matter, because August and I have been involved along East 66th Street, so we prefer that she chair the meeting, and we recuse ourselves.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. So, this is Northeast Design Review 2021-045. East 66th and Lexington, three commercial buildings, new construction, seeking conceptual approval. The location is East 65th Street and East 66th Street, north of Lexington Avenue. Is Cassandra Manna here and Brennan Manna Diamond?
Yes, present.
And, okay, please go ahead.
Diane, you'll need to swear them in. If you would like me to do that, I can, or you can, if you know.
I don't have the, I don't have the text with me, so if you would do that, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, I'll need you, anyone who's going to speak to the matter to be sworn in. So, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Thank you. Then, go ahead.
Thank you, everyone. I am the representative of this project. The, this project initiated with Bob Zimmer of the Baseball Heritage Museum, which is currently housed in Leake Park in the ticketing office there. Bob wanted to utilize the empty lot space. As you can see, the project site in orange there, which is just to the west of Leake Park. He wanted to expand his museum capabilities for a couple reasons. One is programming. He wanted some indoor space so that the programming can continue through the winter season. Obviously, we don't want to be outside in Leake Park during the winter. So, he wanted to create a place where some indoor batting cages could be put up, and he could continue his programming year-round. Additionally, the old ticketing office in Leake Park is, well, it's old, so it doesn't have the climate control that is necessary for a lot of the historic archiving work that the museum does. So, he wanted some expanded office space as well. Bob and I were connected, and our team, the developer, is Signet Real Estate Group. Um, Bob and I were connected and our team, the developer, is Signet Real Estate Group. Um, Kevin Bell is here to represent uh Signet if there's any questions in that direction. But we got together and developed this plan. Um, if you would like to click to the next slide. Um, so these are relatively vacant lots here. You can see the images of two uh decrepit buildings that are basically very dangerous and falling apart um that we would like to have torn down and to build this development project. It's currently just north of the new uh Cleveland Public Library that's being built in the Huff neighborhood. Um, and then to the west of League Park. If you could click to the next slide. As you can see, um, it's right next to League Park and there's um a couple new houses relative in the area to the north and to the west. Next slide. So this is the redevelopment site. Uh, we're requesting these three land bank parcels that are noted there. Um, we currently own the uh six um other lots. Um, so we're just uh need the transfer of the land bank parcels and we'll be able to um build out our our vision, obviously, with approval by city planning and um final approval by design review. Uh, next slide please. So this is uh the basic imaging that we have for uh the lot and the development. And we envision three different buildings um and parking spaces to accommodate the businesses that will be built there. And, you know, for use additionally for the Baseball um Heritage Museum. Um, I believe John Wagner, the architect on this project, is present. I wanted to give him space to speak um in detail on the design.
Thank you, Cassandra. Um, before I begin, um, congratulations, uh, Madam Chair and Mr. Vice Chair. Um, I think that's fantastic, super awesome. So we're excited to uh kick off the new year with an exciting project here uh in uh uh the Huff neighborhood. So the proposed development is a neighborhood-scale uh residential uh retail and uh obviously, the Baseball Heritage Museum um development uh done in a way that we think is in scale with the neighborhood. Um, but also sort of broken up into smaller chunks so that there are those quirky little ins-and-out plazas for people to hang out. Um, depending on ultimately what the retail um takes, uh, what retail shows up here. Um, so starting on the lower left, we have a two-story mixed-use building. Um, ground floor would be retail. Um, I know Cassandra and the Signet team have been meeting with the neighborhood um as well as the East Sixty-S sixth Street corridor to determine uh what the best type of retail. Um, we are looking for small-scale neighborhood, as I mentioned. Um, the building just at the corner uh would be a one or two-story. Uh, in the renderings, you'll see a one-story sort of um open plaza-type uh food hall, commercial space. Um, similar to, you know, could be similar to uh the Van Aken District. And then the building just north on the uh of the site is uh an expansion of the Baseball Heritage Museum. Some office space for them as well as some indoor batting cages uh that will help uh it advance their programming in the winter months. If you go to the next slide. Uh, the landscaping, um, this is very conceptual right now, but obviously, we're looking at sort of a rich mix of of native adaptive plants, street trees, lots of color um and texture during all seasons. Um, we are going to be putting in some sort of fencing between us and the uh existing residential uh single-family homes. Next slide. Um, we are also, uh, city architecture is also working on the East Sixty-S sixth Street uh streetscape. So we will be incorporating um elements from that plan um into the design, including amenities as benches and bike racks and receptacles. Um, and the street lighting. Next slide, please. So some quick conceptual floor plans and they're on the site plan, so obviously you can orient yourself. But also, uh, because they are really conceptual. Um, as I mentioned, the building on the left, ground floor retail, potentially a small-scale hardware store. Um, four uh residential units above. Uh, the commercial building at the corner, which will have potentially have garage doors that open up to the street. And the plaza uh could be uh, you know, a couple of restaurants or a food hall. Um, depending on, um, you know, ultimately, uh, what the neighborhood desires and what uh the development team can procure. And then the last uh building is um a small-scale office space for the Baseball Heritage Museum and three indoor batting cages. Uh, next slide, please. For the architecture of the building, we wanted to do something that was sort of a mix of traditional and modern. Um, we wanted to do something that was in keeping with what is also going on with Huff Library across and Fatima uh directly uh catty corner and then the historically park. Um, so we sort of built a a an idea of architecture that is um is almost as if it's been built out over time, you know, more of a traditional style, uh red brick building. Uh, two-story with ground floor retail and upper floor residential, uh that small sort of pavilion-like uh food hall building. Um, and then in the back, you'll see um a pitched roof, corrugated metal. Um, with uh some sort of funky steel trellis pieces uh that are harkened back to the Great Wall out at League Park. And then in between all of these buildings are these small-scale plazas where people could grab some food, um, hang out, eat. Um, or have a meeting if, you know, say it's the Baseball Heritage Museum meeting. Um, you know, out in between those two spaces. We've tucked all of the parking all around the back so um that it is uh not visible from the street. Uh, next slide, please. The materials, um, obviously, I mentioned sort of a a combination of red brick, painted brick. Um, uh, precast and uh precast seals and and uh soldier course copings, um canopies. Um, some simple signage, storefront, um, corrugated metal, prefabricated building, which sounds horrible, but it's really cool. Um, and then uh, you know, we're we're thinking of wrapping the Baseball Heritage uh new office, you know, woodgrain metal panel. Um, to try and create the notion that this was built out over time. Um, the last two slides, uh, if you go to the next one, um, there are two uh sort of very conceptual renderings. Um, here at the intersection of East Sixty-S sixth and Lex, um, you can see uh the Fatima Center is directly uh in the front of the image, the new Huff Library, proposed and under construction. On the left side, League Park on the right, and then our development as it sort of stitches into the neighborhood and anchors that intersection really well. Um, you get an idea of of sort of the scale of the buildings and how those pieces all come together. Um, if you go to the next slide, there's sort of a ground-level pedestrian view uh looking from the Fatima Center northwest. I get my directions uh mixed up every once in a while. Um, and you can see how it's sort of integrate, it's not sort of. It's integrated into the East Sixty-S sixth proposed streetscape. Um, we're trying to create a special node here at the corner. Um, and then um also pull the buildings back and create transit waiting environments and and extend the bike paths. Um, as well as create a a real concentrated uh place for people in the neighborhood to hang out. With that, I think that's the end of the presentation and uh look forward to hearing your comments.
Mission members, questions? Can I have a motion?
A motion.
I move.
Okay, how about a second?
Fantastic plan, really exciting to see.
Yeah, I agree. I I second McCray Scott.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Michael, would you call the roll, please?
Downing.
Yes.
Ray Scott.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Great, well, motion passes. Um, good luck with your project.
Thank you very much, everyone.
And I will turn the meeting back to Lillian Curry.
Thank you, Diane. Um, the next item is Northeast Design Review. Um, two zero two one dash zero four six. Dorothy Wilson Family Center, new construction. Uh, this is conceptual approval at the corner of Wade Park and East Eighty-Second Street. Um, who is here to speak from this? Is it Abraham is the architect? Any other uh, any other project representatives also?
I think it's just me.
Okay, um, I need to swear you in. Uh, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as usual answer to the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And uh, we're here for conceptual approval, so um, please go ahead.
Thank you. So on the first slide, you can see a a view of the building, a conceptual view with no materials on it. This is standing at the corner of Wade Park and East Eighty-Second, looking towards the northwest. And on the bottom, you can see the the floor plan. What we're trying to do with this is make a mixed-use building, which is centered around the daycare facility, which is in yellow on the plan. And has some additional supporting pieces, uh mainly the three orange spaces to the bottom of the plan are retail spaces. We're using these to help generate income uh to supplement the daycare facility. And on the top, we have a parking structure specifically for the vans that are used to transport kids back and forth to the daycare facility. If you could go to the next slide. So this is looking at the existing site. These have been land bank properties for for a few years now. Um, this is the same view where you're looking towards the northwest. If you can go to the next slide, please. This is at the at on Eighty-Second, looking towards the the southwest. Sorry, my coordinates are not so good. In the next slide, please. And this is standing next to the existing building and looking towards the northeast. The existing building, which you can kind of see on the left there, it is retail on the first floor and residential on the next. If you can go to the next slide. So this is our our basic site plan. We're looking to push the building towards the corner of Wade Park and Eighty-Second to really fill up the corner. And tuck the associated parking between the two retail buildings. Uh, you can see that the general landscaping that we have in here, um, we have received some fantastic design review comments. So probably the next time you see this, we're going to modify the landscaping a little bit. If you can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. These are site amenities that we're intending to include. We have an aluminum privacy fence and some bike racks, some trash facilities and things that you would typically see. The next slide, please. And this is the lighting that we're intending to put in. The two lights on the right-hand side are existing streetlights, the parking lot lighting. We are intending to use full cutoffs, so we only have lighting spilling onto our own site. And the balance of the lighting at the parking lot is is coming from the building. With the long slope you see on the roof that's covering the the retail portion, we are intending to use some canopy lighting to put lighting directly down onto the walking surface. Next slide, please. And here are the basic elevations for the building. Um, the intent, if you look at the top elevation, the intent is that the retail portion and the school portion are going to be completely separated from each other visually, but yet they still tie back into each other. So we have the long slope coming down on the on over the retail, which we're intending to use to capture rainwater. We would like to reuse the rainwater either for a gray water system and or landscaping. The overall intent of the design is to hearken back to a traditional school building. So we're intending to use lots of brick on this and probably with the curved roofs, we're probably going to end up with a standing seam. Although we are still considering using a TPO, this is one of the things that Design Review asked us to study pretty closely before our next presentation. The next slide, please. Lighting information, the next slide. And the next one. So the views of the building, this is looking on East Eighty-Second facing south. And if we can just start to flip through these renderings. So this is the looking at from Eighty-Second, and if you pause right here for one second. The namesake of this building is Dorothy May Wilson, who was a a an activist in the community and a supporter of the community. It's actually her family that is developing this particular design. And we wanted to take a moment and and recognize her contributions by adding a small mural right at the corner for her. You can go to the next slide, please. And this is looking, so you can start to see how the retail and the daycare facility, they're the same building, but they're kind of separated. We feel it's pretty pretty accurate. And at this one, you can see that we've actually, rather than traditional really tall storefronts, because this is own local retail, we have dropped down the storefronts and you can get a hint of who we're targeting for retailers, ice cream, coffee, a bakery. Something that can really support the local neighborhood and also support people dropping off kids if if they chose to choose to do so. The next slide, please. And this is looking back again, that side from a little farther back where you saw the existing retail. You can see the look coming in and you can see how the building's pushed back towards the corner. The next side, we start to get into the interior of the building. This is the walking view. The next side, and you can see what it looks like from within the lot where we're taking the utilitarian stuff and trying to push it as far away as possible from public view. I believe that's the last one.
Um, before commission members, uh, we discussed this, um, I just wanted to read, there were some comments uh from Design Review. Um, there was a condition to study the main entranceway, the storefront mullion patterning, study the overhang proportions between the fascia and the roof and the brick, study the landscaping around the perimeter, the roof materials. Um, study the base plate for lighting uh and the signage proportions. Um, also, um, to add storefront windows for the Wade Park facade and possibly the parking lot facade. I know these are all things you're going to study, but are, um, I just want to ask the applicant, um, were you open to studying these things before you come back?
Absolutely. And these were great suggestions. And there's one more thing that was didn't make it to the list. Uh, they want us to study the north beside at the alley also. It looked a little bit too solid. It was the first rendering that you saw in this presentation.
Okay, um, and.
Comments about the planter boxes. They don't want to see the planter boxes.
Okay, um, the the other two things, one, I just wanted to ask this question. I assume right now the renderings don't reflect either materiality or color. This is not going to be a white building, is it? Or, you know, meaning like you're going to study the materials too, right?
We are thinking to use a white brick specifically.
Okay.
But that has not been finalized yet.
Okay, I mean, my suggestion is that you also explore a variety of of to think about um sort of the texture of the materials, et cetera, that it it I think it's it's such an interesting and wonderful project that it also feel more retail and neighborhood scale and have a bit of texture versus to feel institutional. But even though it's a daycare center, I think it may resonate better than sort of all-white brick, but that's just my opinion. I'm open to you coming back and saying why, but I my my opinion. The second thing is, um, I know they it was in their comment, but I do think there's an awkward um moment here with the sign and the um curved roof, and I know they noted that. But if you if if you can flip the down, um, Maurice, to the uh next slide. Then uh one more. Keep going, one more. I think you're going in the wrong direction, the other way. Um, one more there. Um, I think it's more successful here with the horizontal, I guess that's lighting. Um, and then creating a bit of a line. I would suggest that kind of thinking and then the signage sitting underneath what might help it feel less awkward. So to me, this works is more successful, even though there's no sign here. So um, I say all this because I love the project. I know you have a lot of work to do, um, but it has so much potential. Um, and with that, uh, commission members.
Yes, Madam Chair, a couple comments. Um, I I I would strongly advocate for try trying to to study what happens along the streetscape. Um, oftentimes, we miss opportunities when we just replace what's there. I think there's, since this is childcare and it is going to be some sort of a a retail or a commercial to support it. I think we can have opportunity to become a little more playful, maybe called more colorful. The second thing is the, the juxtaposition of tucking the motor skills area within the building. Obviously, I know why you're doing it. I just have problems when, when, when we do things like that, because there's a lot of cars, there's a lot of fumes, there's, it's, it's, it's a pocket. And, and you know, and it's just, it's there because it's necessary. But I'm trying to study how maybe you can alleviate some of the parking in front of that area so that it's a more dignified way to, to approach it and maybe it spills out, just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a great point, August, actually, since that's the outdoor space. It's a great point.
Billy and I have, this is Councilman Slife. This is really more of a general comment. But just a reminder that there's five new council members. So I, I kind of serve a dual role on this. Obviously, I'm a voting member. I voice my opinion, but also the reason that council has a, a member is just so that, 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 that local voice can be heard. So just over the next couple of weeks, and I know we all know this, but so it's just worth, worth repeating. I'm not accusing anyone. I spoke with Councilwoman House about this project and the previous project that we heard, and, and no opposition that moving forward since they're conceptual. But let's, if we could just make sure for those five wards that we are getting those new members up to speed. It's possible that the previous outgoing member wasn't hyper-aware of these sorts of projects and then that the new member just may have some questions or, you know, even concerns. So just, just a general statement, both as, as we close this one out.
Great point. Thank you, Charles.
Madam Chair, may I make a comment? This is Kim Scott, planning. And to your comments, Councilwoman Slife, I appreciate the, the, the heads up about that. And I can say that with this particular councilwoman, we did meet with her to really go through things that were onboard initiatives that are being undertaken right now and specifically development projects that have been proposed. So, and we also have a, a meeting upcoming to, it's, it's kind of a, here's the whole development picture in Ward Seven to make sure that she's abreast as well as other developers are abreast of other things that are going on, because there are so many projects going on development-wise within Ward Seven. So just note, city planning is being proactive along the line of onboarding council, our council members with regard to what's taking place in their development areas. Thank you.
Thanks for doing that, Kim. Yeah, you're right. Ward Seven is, uh, uh, got a lot going on right now. So that, that, um, thanks for being on topic.
Madam Chair, I, I don't want, wanted to point out that I do see the new councilwoman's name on the list. I don't know if she wanted to speak to this.
Uh, would love to have her if she's here, Councilwoman House. It would be phenomenal to say good morning to you. Are you willing to speak?
Uh, yeah, I'm here. I'm sorry. I was like, of course they would get me when I'm trying to run out the door, but it's August.
Good morning. Good morning.
Everyone, but yes.
And welcome.
Good morning, good morning. Yes, so I am getting up to speed with everything. I'm really looking forward to working with, in partnership with all the developers who are trying and working to come to be Ward Seven residents. So really looking forward to it. I am a bit familiar with Dorothy, the Dorothy Wilson Family Center. And in the process of scheduling a one-on-one with Mrs. Bates and the design team, so we could talk to her some things. And, you know, this is, can be very vital when we look at early childhood education, when we think about a broader scale, broader scale of what early childhood education means for our economy, because we have to do some serious work. And so this can definitely be a piece to lift up the voices and, and just continue to make Ward Seven strong. So thank you so much. I've also been in contact with the, the Signet team a little bit. And we will be also setting up our one-on-one to talk about, you know, just various things and to see how we can move things forward to ensure that, you know, residents who are currently there, you know, can, can be in partnership as well as attracting other ones. So thank you all so much for your time and really looking forward over these next four years to, to working in partnership with this Design Review. And, oh, just, just an open invitation for all of the, the members. If you ever have any question, please don't hesitate to reach out to me, Councilwoman Slife. He can absolutely give you my contact information where I would definitely meet and lead you for your chair. So thank you all so much and have a blessed weekend.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Pleasure to have you.
Madam Chair, Councilwoman House just triggered something in my mind. And be far from me to be, you know, in, in someone else's lane, but you know, childcare or daycares are rated in the state of Ohio from one star or no star to five stars. So I would hope whoever's going to run and manage this facility, they have the ability to achieve the highest recognition bestowed by the state. Thank you.
I, I was hoping the owner would be here. I, I see that she's not, though. I can speak to that specifically, Mr. Fluker. Yes, the answer is yes. This is the highest rated rating that you, they can get. I can't remember if it's a, I don't remember the rating system. I apologize. But she has an existing facility right across the street, kind of category, honestly. And she has just gone in and she got the hires, highest rating for two separate facilities, one on this street, another one on Lindo, I believe. So great concern and yes, we're, we've got you covered.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move approval incorporating the con, comments from Design Review and August's comments from this morning's presentation.
Can I second? I second McCray Scott.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Only thing I want to say before we vote is, and it's a comment generally about kind of Ward Seven. Now, over the last couple of months, we've seen some of the most interesting neighborhood-scale retail start to emerge, including the Signet project and others in Huff. There was another project we've seen recently that I just want to know, to me, it makes me so excited of the future, about the future of neighborhood, street-level retail that is starting to emerge that I think is, in my opinion, some of the most exciting coming in the city that is not part of mixed-use buildings where they say there'll be retail and it never actually emerges. So I really want to commend everyone. This is super exciting in a neighborhood that I think has needed neighborhood-level retail. And so thank you to all the developers and design professionals that are starting to innovate around what the community needs. So with that, we'll take a vote.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Ray Scott.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Like.
Yes.
A motion carries. The next item is the Abbey Road Apartments and Townhouses and Townhouse Development, New Construction. This, oh, I think, or is that the one that, where we removed from the agenda?
Michael, I think that one was removed, correct?
No, actually, it's still on there and needs to be. I thought they were going to ask for it to be tabled. There was another one that was removed. That was the Pearl Excuse.
Okay.
That one's been removed.
I understood that this one was also going to be
I can't remove them the day of the meeting or like right before the meeting after everyone sent out the final agenda. So what I would ask them to do is just ask for a tabling if that's
Okay. Before we do that, go back to the, the description. Let me check. Is there anyone here for this project before, from guys, Brandon? I assume they're not here because we were going to table it. So I'll need a motion for 1910 Abbey Avenue to table this.
I'll move to table Downing.
Second slide.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Can you call the roll, Michael?
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Ray Scott.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Like.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. I understand that the councilman also would like some more community process on this. So we'll see it again once the community has had more involvement. Thank you. Uh, this is the Far West Design Review, 2021-033 Cleveland Muslim Community Center, new addition. This is conceptual approval at 4600 Rocky River Drive. Is Leon Sampit here?
Here.
Okay, is there anyone else from your project team that is presenting as well?
No, that would just be me.
Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as usual answer, answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
I think go to the next slide. So how you doing? Leon Sampat with LS Architects, 22082 Lorraine Road, Fairview Park, Ohio, here representing the Cleveland Muslim Community, Community Center at 4600 Rocky River Drive. So this project, they constructed their facility a few years back, the mosque center. As part of that, now they, they are trying to keep the, the community engaged with a new center. So this fitness center is a one-story structure. It's approximately 13,515 square feet. It'll contain an indoor basketball court, a fitness center, locker rooms and restrooms, some storage space. The, if you go to the next slide. So the facility is going to blend with the existing mosque center. There was a masonry with a lighter white and a gray structure at the Rocky River Drive side. We are continuing that masonry. We can match that, that material. That way, it would kind of blend in seamlessly in this rendering. There are, the first left, the top rendering, the, the first four windows are existing and then from there over would be the new. So we're trying to kind of create the, the Rocky River Drive continuous. But now, when we get to the basketball court, we did need some extra height. So we, we've kind of broken that up with the metal siding. And that's the bottom right corner rendering. Even though it's a basketball court, we wanted to bring some natural light in and kind of break up the wall structure. So we are doing some high glazing to just kind of keep in tune with the existing architecture of the building. If you go back to the previous slide. So in in redesigning the site, we, we have lost some parking. Currently, there's 225 parking spaces. We reduced this to 165. You know, the, the center and the community feel that this will be okay. There's only really one time a day or a week where they actually fill this parking lot and that would be on Fridays between one and two. As far as the Design Review, we did have some comments. Currently, we, we are adding a, a entrance drive on the, on the Fairville Avenue. This entrance drive, there was concern with that being a cut-through for neighbors or even people just cut, because it's straight across. The other concern with that new drive was that headlights would shine into the residence right directly across from this. So what we've, what we are going to do, locate that drive more to the north. They actually own the parcel directly across from that north property line. So that will then in turn kind of reduce two things. It would, it would offset the, the parking drives from each other to allow, not allow easy cut-through. And then also the headlights would be shining into their own property. They do have additional property throughout this area, approximately four or five other sites kind of scattered throughout the area. They, they do intend on, you know, with future expansion, building another school. So they are looking into, you know, purchasing and gaining additional sites to expand their parking and school in the future. But that's still under, under review. As additional comments from the Design Review Committee from yesterday, there was planters added at the east property line during the construction of the, of the mosque. Those planters were not approved in Design Review. So we've agreed to go back to the approved landscaping and plant trees across the entire Rocky River Drive length. So that'll hopefully improve that landscaping. We have already looked at revising that and adding tree structures there. I don't think there's any questions.
I, I, this is August, Madam Chair, to the applicant. I see that, you know, you have the basketball court and I assume it's probably a multi-function space. Is there a need to have like, it spill over and have some space outside? Again, not trying to get into the program. And I think might be missing an opportunity to create some, some amenity space outside.
They, they felt that they, they wanted really the indoor space. They did not feel that outdoor space because of parking requirements and the need for the parking. They, they don't want to take additional space. We do have a small corner that they could add, but I, I don't believe it's big enough to actually do any, any outdoor activity, significant outdoor activity.
Okay, it was just a thought. I mean, it, since they only use the parking lot once a week, I was just trying to figure out how you could come up with something that, that's more flexible. That's all, no big deal.
Yeah, I agree. And, and they actually do use, they actually cordon out the parking during the day and, and the school, they use the parking lot as a play structure during certain times. But, uh, yeah, we, we can have additional discussions on that.
And we, we've done incorporate on, on several projects the last couple of years, well, at least in my previous life, multifunctional areas in the parking lot so that they could be easily sort of cordoned off. Cordoned, and, and, and you could do all types of activities, sort of hang basketball courts or hopscotch or whatever. So just, just a thought.
Now that we had, we wouldn't have cars going out on the Rocky River Drive, I think that, that parking to the northeast there would be a perfect opportunity for that.
That's an extraordinary idea, August. I think, I, I, I think we should maybe incorporate that into the, to the motion, which is just to, as you're in conception, this is just conceptual to see if you guys could explore the idea of that corner there around Rocky River Drive, having maybe a different coloration and design patterning, as August said, so that it is also, it signals a kind of joyous place, if that's how it's going to be used, and to really treat it that way artistically. So, August, I think that's an exceptional idea.
Madam Chair, we also have Councilman Slife with his hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I I'll, I can go ahead and, if, I can make a motion incorporating that and also all the previous comments, but also August's suggestion. And just, this is a, really a growing anchor institution in Ward Seventeen, the Alomari Mosque and School. It's an interesting, as you can kind of tell from this, this slide, an interesting development case, you know, with, with having the prayer space oriented towards Mecca. It, it, when, when this has been built out, it's kind of thrown the zoning code and setbacks for a loop, but we've made it work and it's really exciting. We get a lot of people moving into this part of West Park so they can be within walking distance of this mosque and school. So I'm eager to see this move forward. And then as it was stated, opportunities for growth of the school. We were talking about other, you know, seals, are there places for senior housing and really recognizing this as, as an anchor institution for this part of Rocky River Drive. So, so with that, I'll make the motion and just excited to move forward.
I'll second Downing.
Uh, we have a motion in a second. And, and Councilman, I assume there were quite a few conceptual comments in the Design Review. If we could just make sure we acknowledge those in, in August too. I don't want to read them all, but there were quite a few from locals.
Incorporating Design Review, adding August's.
Okay. Uh, so we have a motion in a second. Can we take the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Ray Scott.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Like.
Yes.
Motion carries. I think our last item is the Rock Hall. Um, this is, uh, downtown flats, uh, two zero two one dash zero three two. This is, uh, Rock and Roll Hall of Fame Music Plaza signage. This is for final approval. Um, I think we have someone here, Amanda Caldwell. Is there anyone here also from the Rock Hall?
Hi, good morning. This is Jesse Vlucy with ANC. Uh, we're the LED provider.
Okay. Anyone else from your team or the project?
Amanda Caldwell was, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, Amanda.
Hi, Amanda with IDB. We were the applicant on behalf of ANC.
Okay. Uh, I'm going to swear then. Do you, uh, both swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Uh, so yeah, the design is for one screen, uh, single-sided. I believe it faces west, southwest. Will be in the, in the highlighted box there on the stage. I believe the Rock Hall desires to use it for some, some ad space and, uh, some live video for, for performances. Go on to the next slide.
Wait, as you said, ad space, this is for promotion for the Rock Hall, not off-premise advertising, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, the brightness of the LEDs fully controllable. Um, I know in the, the previous meeting, there were some concerns with, uh, you know, onlookers. Maybe some, some brightness regulation. That's not a problem. Uh, the structure is aluminum. Uh, the trim is aluminum. Um, the backside of the screen is, uh, is kind of faced with a, with a tension, uh, vinyl, which will allow some airflow for the LED. Um, you can go on to the next slide. Yeah, just going through the structure a little bit more. Um, obviously the, the aesthetic, you know, matches the, the Rock Hall, um, I guess feel. So that was kind of the look the client was going for there. Uh, I don't know that I have too much else to add. It's a, it's a pretty self-explanatory sign.
Okay, commission members, um, I did see some conditions. So could you speak to those? Um, and I'll read them. So, uh, this was part of the, the, the motion. It said, uh, the back of the sign have artwork, uh, so that it's not blank. Uh, the light levels be monitored and configured not to create traffic issues, which you address and acknowledge that live streaming will be regulated in some way. Um, can you speak to those comments?
Yeah, so I obviously acknowledge all of them. Um, I know the, uh, signage we are still working through with the, the Rock Hall, uh, trying to figure out exactly what they would like, uh, designed for the, the back of the screen there, but that is in progress. I just don't have anything final to present. And then the control of live video, obviously it's, it is fully, uh, controllable, uh, on our end, uh, in terms of brightness and, and content. Um, so we, we would be able to meet any regulations that were, um, that were required of us.
Okay. Um, and I think it's okay if you come back to staff with the back of the, I do agree with that comment though. It isn't great here in this location to have a completely blank back, especially because that's where the seating is.
Sure.
So, but I don't, if, if the commission's okay with it, I'm not sure you need to come back here, but, but I think staff needs to see it. Um, when you figure that out.
Yep, not a problem. I know we're, we're working through it and, and we should have it soon. Uh, we're looking to begin construction, uh, next week, you know, obviously pending the, the approval here today.
Okay, so commission members, um, if we, if we could have a motion, but if we're going to move to approve it, I think we need to have a condition for staff to, um, sign up on what ends up on the back of the sign.
Sure. Um, Madam Chair, I, I move to approve, um, signage as presented with the caveat that applicant or corporate comments, um, from design review as well as work with staff to create a creative way to cover the, the rear of the signage.
And I'll second that motion.
Uh, we have a motion in a second. Um, can you call the roll, please?
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, I think that's it. Is that correct, Michael?
Yes, Madam Chair, that, uh, all the agenda items that I have today.
Okay. Uh, so, um, before we adjourn the meeting, I just want to open it back up to the commission members. I want to say how excited we are for uh, the Bib administration and I personally hope that this commission that we will collaborate with the new staff in the department and, um, that this be a really collaborative, um, kind of few years. It's an exciting moment. And Charles, with you and council, um, really look forward to working hand in hand with the council. I mean, on this commission, but the entire council and new administration, it's a really exciting time.
Madam Chair, I, I, I was remiss in making earlier comments. First of all, congratulations to you, Lilian. Congratulations, Marka. Um, and, and lastly, most importantly, I'm here to serve. I'm here to put myself where I'm, I think I'm needed. So, um, this is a pleasure for me to accept this esteemed role. And I, I, I look forward to rolling up our sleeves. Thank you.
Um, thank you. Um, so, uh, the, we're going to adjourn the meeting and we'll see you all in two weeks. And Marka, as we said before, call us. Uh, we'll send you all our cell phone numbers. We're here to help you and we're here to help the staff and, uh, we will do so. So congratulations to you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Okay. Well, motion, uh, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.